Hey Sam, I think you brought the Mr. Tremblor.
Yeah.
How are you?
Yeah.
What was that?
Uh, well, she was here, wasn't she, Friday during the blues festival?
You was here last Friday?
Yeah.
Oh.
Last Saturday.
At the blues festival.
Yeah.
Oh, you went there and gave a rock?
No, well, we just. I didn't like the blues before.
I don't even remember that.
And Mr. Evans.
Yeah, you want to go up here?
Yeah. Yeah, they got the trombone shorty and so.
One of the best musicians.
They were packed.
They were, I wouldn't know.
He was there, yeah.
Yeah.
It was like Greg Allman was kind of like a lead.
I know. Did they do the thing where they all dropped their instruments and changed places?
Are you just going to have them go up to the podium or?
No.
You're going to drop out?
Except for the trombone, all the trombone guys pick up different instruments and start playing.
Yeah, and so you're going to go ahead, are you going to drive her?
Their remote.
Should I pick up at some point?
I can, I can drive her. I can. 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 I can.
Well, this is the sentinel?
It was out. Are you ready, Sue?
Uh, yes.
Is it the sentinel?
I don't know where.
You ready?
It's something Sam did.
Yeah.
You want me to?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call into session, this special joint budget meeting of the Capital City Council and the successor agency. I want to welcome everyone again and everyone who may be watching on television. And let's begin with a roll call, Sue.
Councilmember Harlan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Batorf.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here. Next, we have additional materials. Oh, I'm sorry. I am remiss. I skipped the pledge of allegiance. And so we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Norton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Next on the is the additional materials, identification of additional materials. And one, we do have a memorandum here from John Berisone, the city attorney, mentioning his plans to retire. Congratulations, John. But that won't be until March 31st, 2015. And then we also had a story about Capitola mayor's proclamation for Trombone Shorty, a wonderful band, if anyone ever has the chance to hear them. We have an email from Molly Ordin to the city council and it's concerning, looks like speeding in the village. I haven't had a chance to read the entire ordinance. We have a letter from the Arts Council of Santa Cruz County to Lisa Murphy and staff concerning their, and this is from Michelle Williams, concerning the community programs funding. And we have an article here from the land trust, looks like their brochure. So those are the additional materials that we've received here at the dais. Next, that will bring us to public comments. Sue, anyone in the audience wish to make a comment to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor, city manager.
Theresa, I thought you were coming up here with me.
My name is Lori Hill and I'm happy to be the president of the Capitola Begonia Festival this year. Our theme is begonias on Broadway. This is Teresa Green, a fellow board member of the Capitola Begonia Festival. I came here tonight to thank you for everything that the city does on behalf of the Begonia Festival. I know that you keep the Begonia Festival in your heart and in your mind and hopefully still in your budget. And I also had some news to share with you tonight. Several of us have been following along on the budget closely, so we don't need to really comment on that. But we just got our new trifolds in and we're really excited. It looks great. The program's going to be terrific. There's a lot of excitement out there with our new theme, begonias on Broadway. We have a lot of folks that are talking about coming out and playing with us. So we're encouraging you to do the same. Again, I would like to thank the council, but I also would like to thank the recreation department because they are helping us with an upcoming community workshop, which is going to be held on June 25th at 7:00 PM. It's an opportunity for people to come out and learn more about the Begonia Festival, maybe come out and volunteer, maybe they're interested in building a flow, but they need a little more information. And it's going to be held at Jade Street. Also, the recreation department did a great job, including the Begonia Festival, on their flyer. Kudos to the Art and Cultural Commission. Their postcard for the bands came out and sure enough, Begonia Festival's got a little slot on there, too. So thank you to all of you folks for, again, keeping us in your hearts and mind. We do have a fundraiser coming up on August 3rd. Please mark your calendars for that. It's going to be at the Shadow Brook. It's a not-to-miss event, starts at 1:30. And I think that's all I had. Was there anything you wanted to add, Teresa?
I just wanted to add that it's less than three months away. Summer will go quickly and so ramp up to having a lot of fun.
Well, and Teresa's slow to toot her own horn. I have to add that this year we've added an event. And the event is a begonia mural. And it's going to be at the lawn up above Espinade Park. And it's going to be an opportunity for people to come down and place begonias on a pre-designed mural screen. And at the end, it'll make a great photo opportunity. And that was Teresa's idea. So thank you very much. I'm going to leave this flyer with staff and with luck, it'll make its way to the kiosk and I'll leave some extra trifolds for you. Thank you, Susan.
All right. Thank you, Lori, and thank you, Teresa. We look forward to seeing that begonia mural.
Good idea.
Is there any other member of the public wish to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on now to council, city treasurer's staff comments. We'll start with staff comments. Of staff comments, city treasurer comments this evening?
Um, actually, do you have a comment? So I've been sitting and listening to the budget study sessions and it's seeming like there's an idea that we have a surplus of money. And I'm just here to report the numbers. But our emergency fund is still at a deficit. We have about $679,000 in our emergency fund. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the last flood cost about $1.5 million. So it, I just kind of want to set that straight. I know that fund, as well as the technology fund, is also at a deficit. So it's really great that we have a surplus in unanticipated revenues, but we don't have a surplus in every single one of our account balances, more specifically, the emergency fund. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to council comments. Council members?
Yes. This Saturday, this Sunday, Capitola Custom Rod and Car Show. Come on down to the Espinade. Wonderful cars, good time by all. Music, fun, raffles. Come on down.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
Are you going to talk about the meeting last night?
You go ahead, Doc.
I just wanted to let everybody know that we attended, Councilman Norton and I, attended the SoCal Water District meeting last night. And at that meeting, they decided to impose a level, was it stage three water emergency?
Stage three.
And I believe they held back on calling for a moratorium, at least at this point, but there are going to be some ramifications of that level three, which I believe is on their website. But that is in, they voted, I believe, three to two to pass that last night. So that will be coming our way. So the water issue continues to be something we need to pay attention to.
Can I add one thing to that?
Absolutely.
They also sent staff away to come back to their next meeting to actually add a water fee for one acre foot per new residence that will be approximately $40,000 attached to the existing permit of $18,000. So a new water permit in our community will cost in a range of $58,000. A very expensive item. What it does to construction, we don't even know, but it will have effect in some way.
Thank you for that report. Stephanie, go ahead. I just wanted to ask, I know we had multiple accidents yesterday on Bay Avenue. And I was hoping that we could just kind of get a quick report and also find out how Officer Evans is doing.
So, excuse me, good evening, Mayor Story and councilmembers. We had two accidents. The first involved a pedestrian versus a vehicle intersection at Hill and Bay. And while we were investigating that, Officer Evans was responding to assist in traffic control when he was struck by a vehicle that had made a left-hand turn out of the parking lot between the building of near Knob Hill and the car wash. And per our policy, that is investigated by the California Highway Patrol. And so that investigation is continuing and they will conduct that investigation. Officer Evans is, was released from Dominican Hospital yesterday and was treated for minor injuries and is resting at home. And he has appreciated all the calls and comments that he's gotten from folks on a speedy recovery. The pedestrian also suffered some minor injuries and was taken to Dominican Hospital. I don't know her status at this point, but that object is being investigated as well.
Right. Thank you for that report and hopefully give our best to Officer Evans.
We will. Thank you.
And I said, when will that report be coming back to us from the highway patrol on the?
Typically, you can take anywhere from 10 to 30 days, depending on the measurements. Sometimes you get additional witnesses that will call in a few days later or they will send an email saying, by the way, I was a witness, call me. And so to get all those statements and put all that together in the factual diagram, it does take up to 30 days, so.
Okay, okay. I was just, I'm hoping that we can maybe be watchful of that intersection. Ever since this happened, I've had so many people just, you know, comment to me about how it's a precarious intersection to try to cross. And so maybe we could stay attuned to that and see if there's anything that we need to do to make it safer.
It is worth noting, a couple of weeks prior, the police department, Public Works Department, we did look at accident data information there. And I think it's been five years since we've had a pedestrian accident there, so.
Oh, it has, okay.
Yeah, it's been some time, but we are continuing to monitor.
All right. Well, thank you, chief.
I asked him earlier. Oh, you did? Yeah.
Okay. You're good?
I am, yeah.
Okay. So that will bring us now to the general government public hearing portion of our meeting. And this meeting is to continue our budget study session on the proposed 2014-15 fiscal year budget for the city of Capitola, as well as the Capitola Successor Agency and the capital improvement program. The recommended action is to continue budget deliberations and provide direction to staff or professor, I can't get that out, for preparation of the budget resolution for adoption. Thank you. Staff report?
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. So this evening, what we're going to do is first, we're going to be focusing on a number of questions that came up at our first budget hearing on the 21st. There were a number of items that council asked about and staff has provided some research and information in their staff report. And the department ads are here to present a little bit more detailed responses here at the meeting. Then next, we're going to take a look at the number of items were suggested at the first meeting to consider for new funding, not included in this year's budget. And as you're aware, we have a balanced budget that we presented, so we will also be looking at potential sources of funding for those other programs. The next step on the agenda this evening is to take a recommendation from our community group subcommittee regarding the funding allocations for the community groups. And then lastly, we'll be looking to the council for direction, ultimately to staff, so that we can get clear about whether there are changes that we need to make to the proposed budget necessary so we can consider adoption at a future meeting.
Pull your microphone a little closer.
Of course, thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tori, who's going to start to dig into some of the questions that were raised on the 21st.
One of the first questions that came up was related to cash flow and how is the city going to be managing cash in fiscal year 1415? Just to go back, as you may recall, in June of 2013, we did some revisions to our financial management policies, which gave the city manager authority to use funds from the general fund contingency fund and internal service funds for short-term cash flow purposes. These were not long-term or to use for a particular item, but just to bridge until we received our tax revenues in December. As part of that policy, we said that we would not use the emergency fund or the general plan open space funds. To go over the cash flow projection, looking at that chart, what you'll see this year is a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. We are starting out with a dark, the darker orange color is being the general fund and we're starting out with a positive fund balance and we don't start dropping a little bit until September. That's when we start relying on the contingency fund. And it goes low as $450,000. In the past, we've seen it drop as low as close to $1.5 million. We believe we will have sufficient funds in the contingency to cover this. In prior years, we may have used funding from the internal service funds to help in assisting that drop. You'll see in December and in April, we get some significant tax revenues that bring us into the positive again. And just a couple of notes, why we're seeing more positive general fund is now we're keeping that $200,000, approximately $200,000 in the general fund, fund balance. Another reason is that we have some additional fund balance that's not fully distributed. We've talked about the $475,000, that's to be distributed as part of this fiscal year budget. So that makes the picture a little bit better. In future years, we will see some, see some more dips within the general fund. However, the contingency fund should be able to cover those in fiscal year 1415 as well as what we're seeing in 1516. Another item that council questioned was our current debt obligations. We have the pension obligation bond, the Pacific Cove relocation bond, loan, as well as the I-Bank for the Village and Beach lot, too. All of these loans contain some kind of prepayment penalty or do not opt for that option, especially the pension obligation bond, which is our highest interest rate. That one's term expires in 2017. To give you an idea of where we stand with our benchmark cities, the following chart was just updated for the city of Capitola. As of right now, we haven't received financial statement copies of the other benchmark cities. On a comparative note, we would have been at 2.1% based on the proposed budget and the benchmarks. What I did is updated to reflect our most recent estimates. The reason that we have gone just below 2% is because we chose not to fund the street sweeper with debt is a portion of that. As well, excuse me, as well as we had increased revenues, we had over $1 million in additional revenues. So that put us in a little better position. Now, when we get other information back from the other cities, it may be a little bit more relational because just as we're seeing sales tax and TOT going up, they may also be going up. But the city's debt ratio is still projected to be less than 2%.
And by way of reference, all of these cities have very low debt ratios. So, you know, 5% is not considered a high debt ratio by city standards. So we're operating in a very low debt ratio.
I have a couple of questions. So the 2.1% includes the balance of our POB, correct?
No, the POB is excluded and that was also excluded from our benchmark study and from any other cities who have POBs. And the reason being is because when they developed a benchmark study, it was considered to be similar to a debt for salaries. So if we were carrying the salaries on our operating budget, then we would not have the POB there.
Okay. Also footnote one, I'm trying to figure out where that applies. Is that the Village Beach?
Could you read it? I'm sorry, that must have dropped off. Footnote one applies to the Santa Cruz County Bank. When we had paid the additional $500,000 towards our loan, they re-amortized the loan payment and it dropped to close to $130,000. But we negotiated to pay the original amount, which was closer to $165,000, to allow us to prepay that loan down earlier without penalty.
And could perhaps you could come back at some point in time, not tonight, not until after the budget, let us know how much money we would save if we paid a year in advance of our POB payment? If we accelerated it by one year at 6%?
So unfortunately, the POB doesn't have a prepayment option. We've called them, it's a bank in Europe. They basically say, no.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
There may be some future opportunities to look at, at some debt reduction. Right now, none of these interest rates, other than the POB, really jump out at me as something that would make sense to pay early on. We may have some opportunities in the future to pay on some other obligations and obviously...
But they're all higher than Lath, so.
Right. They're all higher than Lath. But for example, I think you've, on some of the boards you sit on, you may have discussed prepaying your PERS, your annual PERS payments. And that may be something that we may be exploring or proposing here in the coming year, just simply because the structure, our salary structure's changing and the rules at PERS are changing, which could make it advantageous to do that. And that would get us a pretty good return.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I just ask again about the benchmark study and how the cities were chosen?
The cities were chosen for similar operations.
By the consultant?
By the consultant.
We didn't choose them.
No, we didn't.
We chose them.
Yeah, was it cooperative?
We chose them with the fact, we would, our consultant, Bill Stadler, who's...
He was the choice.
Yeah, he, he basically went through a screening process of the 500 cities in the state for a variety of factors and came up with a list of about 20, I think. And then we went to the finance advisory committee and we winnowed it down and that was how we ended up with the list.
But do we feel that they're comparable? That we're really comparing apples and oranges here? Because if we're not, it doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense to look at it. You know, I mean, unless it, we really have a structure that's similar, size that's similar, you know, operation that's similar in terms of income and expenses and things like that. Otherwise, you know, you can look at...
There is no perfect other city. I mean, the reality is, is that, you know, you can look at each one of those cities and point out differences in either their operation or size from us. When we looked around, these were the best we could come up with. And in some senses, you know, I think everyone just needs to acknowledge that this is what it is. It's just simply some other cities that we've identified that, you know, are comparable in some ways and it's worth looking at them, but it certainly doesn't mean necessarily that that should define our policies or programs.
With exception of Scotts Valley, they're all coastal tourist towns.
Right.
Comparable size and...
Yeah, those are the criteria. We were looking for relatively similar size.
Scotts Valley may be a little bit out of line, but other the rest of them seem pretty...
Well, but the money in Laguna Beach is just way out of line.
Well, no, we corrected, we corrected for enterprise accounts, I believe.
Yes, we did correct for enterprise accounts as well as fire was removed from those.
Yeah, so it was all, it was corrected for things that they may have that we don't, like fire service. It was a pretty careful study.
Yeah, but in terms of just price of homes, you know, Sausalito and Laguna Beach are completely different than they are here. They're, you know, millions, million, I mean, we're getting there, but, you know, it's...
I'm glad to hear it.
It's, you know, hopefully going to take us a while. And, well, I think the mayor and I should go to Laguna Beach and investigate.
Yeah, sister.
Maybe we should go to all these cities and...
Tour the coast.
You can keep carpenteria, that's right.
Well, you know, Pismo Beach is, you know, is very similar. And, you know, what we're, what we're seeing in, you know, all these coastal towns that we're experiencing this year, you know, tremendously, is just this new influx of more people coming on weekends, more people coming for the events, more need for gearing up for the holidays and the great job the public works guys are doing and the women are doing and the police department and, you know, everything. So that, you know, that's sort of our challenge is that's, that's the sector that's kind of growing and the activity that's growing and we need to prepare for that and budget for that and plan for that. And it, yeah, a few years ago, it didn't cost us that much for some of these things. Now they do because we have more people at the beach and the need for all these other bathroom cleanings and beach cleanings and, you know, things like that, just to keep up with the numbers because we're, we're growing.
Is that a product of global warming?
Oh, probably. Well, they, just the increase in heat in the Central Valley that causes people to come over. But, you know, the, you know, we, we're not a sleepy little, sleepy little seaside community that we, anymore that we used to be and we're doing a good job.
Lori, you want to go ahead with your presentation?
Move to the public works director.
So one of the issues we discussed was establishment of a facilities fund and establishing some criteria on levels of funding. So what we did is we looked up and the National Research Council had a recommendation that a facilities for maintenance and operations, this is kind of an annual maintenance and operations of facilities, should be in the range of 2% to 4% of the replacement value of the structures. So the list you see there is all the insured structures that the city has on its records with the amount they're insured for, for replacement value. So you can see we have $17 million, all over $17 million of replacement values for the structures in the city. At 2%, that'd be annual funding of $350,000. At this point, as we're kind of new and kind of getting a better feel for where this is, staff's recommendation for this year is we funded at the 50% of that 2% level. And so we're recommending $175,000. It's something we can review, see if that is an adequate amount or if we need to move it more toward the 2% to 4% range. But as you can see, some, we do have some buildings that will be going on. We have the new police annex, which is another couple hundred thousand dollars on here that will be going on next year. And maybe the gym going away if we're lucky. But, so this, this is kind of a liquid number, but that's our recommendations at this point is $175,000 and that's how we would arrive at it. Are there any questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
You can look at the wharf as actually in many ways of being a deferred maintenance. Is that, is that, even though we have a replacement value here of $5 million, it's been so deferred that anything, any, anything that we do on the wharf is a very major expense at any year, so.
This, the 2% to 4% range is for ongoing, and it specifically says if there's deferred maintenance, you're going to have to increase levels above that. So you're absolutely right. This is just to kind of keep the buildings in the wharf in this case at a current level. And if there's deferred maintenance, I would be on top of this.
I was told that, that our community center was built for $83,000.
Yeah, that's a lot of, I believe, I wasn't here, but it was volunteer labor at that time, yes. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
So there was just a comment about the city staffing levels. And so what this chart here shows you is our history since, I went back to '07, '08 to 1415. And what you'll see in '07, '08, and '09, those were the days when we were fully staffed and that was pre-recession, fully staffed, fully serviced, public works, police, finance. So those, then of course, the recession hit us pretty hard and the departments that really took the brunt of it was public works, some of PD, particularly our front office, you know, the reception and the PD front office. We cut back in the community development as well because we saw the RDA go away. And then as you see, when you move forward to 1314 and 1415, yes, we see a gradual, very slight increase in the changes from '08, '09 to 1415. And we've definitely had some service level increases. We've had demands for, you know, of course, parking and that reflects in this budget, new parks, streets. The PD front office, the demand to have that open, city hall to have, demand to have that open and staff. So you definitely are seeing service levels reflecting in your staffing levels. And as you see in the PD, we had the parking level increase there with plans for anything else in terms of increases, of course, you don't see anything in museum and arts and culture, that is actually staffed by an hourly person. So you won't see changes there and there's no plans for any changes at this time for finance and community development either, or building or recreation. So if there's any questions with that one, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? Yes, Stephanie?
Where do you have the arts commission staff personnel listed?
So they're actually not a benefited individual. It's an hourly position, so that's why you won't see them reflected in the staffing levels. Yeah. Okay. Did you have a question?
I did. I was just seeing if any other council members had one for us. But it seems like the biggest percentage drop is in the community development department. Are we adequately staffed there, consistent with the current level of economic activity? Are we ultimately, as the economy fully recovers, are we getting back up to previous levels, the highs of 4.67?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I would like to think of us as being lean, mean and efficient. We're adequately staffed to handle the demands that come into the counter each day. We typically process our discretionary applications within four to six weeks. There is a lot of long-range planning work in the backlog. Certainly, if there were more resources, we could tackle that more expeditiously, but I don't think there's a pressing need to add staff to get to that work at this time.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, but I think if, if, you know, if you do start experiencing a backlog or, and we start seeing a lot more projects come before us, you know, you want to keep us attuned to how that's going.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike?
Any opportunity to get lean, mean and more efficient in the Finance Department? It seems like we're creeping up to our banner year of '08 and it is some concern.
I, I feel that the finance staff is, is operating very lean. They, as of course, the budget grows for other departments, the demand for finance also grows. We've accepted some of the work from community development as well as public works for clerical staff.
Okay, I knew somebody was picking up Rich's slack. Thank you.
The housing portfolio has, housing portfolio and a lot of the, of the payment processing that used to be done in, in community development and public works has transferred over to, to finance. So you'll see that we were at five and a quarter, actually five point, was that 5.38 looks like in eight, nine? And we're almost a full staff person below that and there is increased responsibilities from where they were back then. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So the next slide is going to be kind of a little more emphasis about the Police Department and looking back to '06, '07. If you look at the top line, it kind of gives what our, our budget has been over the last couple of years since then. But I also tried to factor in calls for service, our staffing levels, and also the types of crime and where crime has been over the last seven or eight years. So just to give you an idea, the crime information is done by calendar year, so it's January to December and that's why that's not completed there. Just to give you a little bit more information on that, so we had an increase of about 14% in our Part One crimes. And just to kind of go over what Part One crimes consists of, it's our homicide, rapes, robberies, assaults. Assaults are broken down as simple and aggravated. And when I talk about violent crime in a minute, you'll understand that. It also includes burglary, larceny, auto theft and arsons. We also look at our self-initiated calls for service activity. The self-initiated activity actually went up 9% and the calls for service from our community went up 2%. So we had a, a overall 11% increase in our calls for service with our community. And if you also look at our staffing levels, we've, we're at a high of 32.75 in '07, all the way through '09, and we are now at 31.65. We continued back to where we had three parking enforcement officers now and with the help of Measure O, we were able to put a, a third community service officer. And so we've been able to manage all of that. We also, one of our parking enforcement officers works on the pay stations and does all the maintenance for those and works with our vendor in trying to expedite the repairs on the pay stations as they go along. Any other questions on this slide?
I do.
Yes?
It would be easy to be concerned about almost a 20% increase between '12 and '13 and '13, '14, between the drop, but it seems like we, there's a reporting anomaly going on there, 11, 12, 12, 13, 13, 14. Did the reporting methodology or were we better at recording, reporting Part One crimes or is there, was there really that big an increase? I mean, from, I know it's down from 833 and yet those little, little fluctuations there?
Well, the Part One crimes, larceny, we had 56 more larceny crimes last year than we did the year before and that was most of the increase. As far as aggravated assaults, we had the same number of aggravated assaults in last year as we did the year before. We had more simple assaults. And to try and define the, between the two, simple assaults is when you don't experience a significant injury that would take you to a medical professional. And that's kind of how we differentiate between the two. So we did see an increase of simple assaults by 36 more crimes. Aggravated assaults were the same.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Go.
So in regards to disaster preparedness, we have a full-time representative that works with the county and the County Emergency Office of Services, which is up at the Netcom facility, they actually are responsible for providing the countywide services. So if there was a mutual aid request that came from Capitola or all the agencies, it would go through the county and up through the state and we follow the model of, of SEMS. It's something that we all work with. So our assigned coordinator works with the County Office of Emergency Services. We are currently in the process of updating our emergency management plan to make sure it's consistent with the state requirements and that we, any changes in the law that might have come in the last three or four years, we make sure we stay on top of that. It's been about three years since the department has coordinated a tabletop-type exercise where we would bring a natural disaster to staff and we would work through that process. There are a lot of variables that go into that and that is something that is in our plan of doing in the next fiscal year. Again, we wanted to get our emergency plan updated to make sure that all the evacuation processes, all the management of those processes are kind of in order. Unfortunately, there are a lot of changes that happen with staff in the county and the state level and so making sure that we stay up to date on those is a challenge, but that's something that we continue to do. There is some current legislation that is out there, AB 1620, which is proposed legislation for a statewide executive level commission that would assess and approve the conditions of our emergency responses from a statewide level. The bill would require the commission to review and make recommendations on emergency management and disaster preparedness. Something that we also do, which I consider part of a disaster preparedness, is our active shooter training. We do that annually and we work with the other agencies in the county in that response. We work with our local schools in that response so that all the responses are consistent with our education system and our fire and EMS. And, excuse me, we also have been promoting quite frequently our NICSIL notification system and other social media components that we have. We have over 1,000 people registered from the community with our NICSIL program, so that's going well. And we always are continuing to evaluate what other social media we can use to try and engage our community better. Any further questions?
Yeah, Dennis.
I'm going to step back ready on, can you, can we talk a little bit about the pay stations and what, what kind of maintenance we anticipated and what we're, is costing us to maintain them? Are we, I think we discussed this at one time to actually keep a running count of whether these pay stations were a viable move for us and if, if the maintenance is much more, maybe it's not, maybe there's taking up the, the difference in what, our staff doesn't reduce by this, if I'm not mistaken, but, but you, it sounds like we have one person assigned full-time to taking care of just the maintenance of these.
They just don't do maintenance, but that's part of their assignment. But they do, do that so that we are more efficient in how we get the repairs done in a more timely manner. Some of the repairs are, it's all dependent on what, really what the issue is. If it's a programming issue, it's a standard charge that are, we're given. Sometimes depending on where the sun rotates, in the winter, it's a little bit lower and sometimes the machines don't get charged as well. We try and rotate the battery level out so that doesn't become a problem for us. But it has helped us stay on top of it a little bit further because that person is scheduled on the weekends.
Is that cost what we anticipated?
We're looking at all the costs. We haven't really came to a conclusion with them, but we're going to continue to look at them. At times, depending on the machine and how frequently it may go down, some of them have been higher than others, but others have been less.
I think, I think overall, they've crossed, they've, they've been trickier than we thought they were going to be going in. I think that, I hope that part of it was just sort of trial and error. I think a lot of the problems that we had in Pacific Cove were related to the solar angle, issues that we encountered this, this winter where they just probably weren't getting enough sun, so we've hardwired them now. So, and in addition, one of the new ones that we got downstairs, down in the Lower Park Cove, had a, I think, a motherboard issue which, which had to be replaced. So hopefully there's sort of a break-in period and it's going to level off. Do keep in mind though that the old, the old meters were certainly not trouble-free and we did have a contractor that, that worked for us pretty, pretty heavily just repairing them. So we will, like the chief said, we're going to have to evaluate. I think we're going to get through this, this next year is going to be a real good first complete run where we get a lot of data and we'll be able to see the net effect.
And I just wanted to chime in with, some of the maintenance is just like replacing the paper. That's, you know, we didn't do that in, in the meters, but as the city manager mentioned, at any given time when we had single space meters, I would say 20% of them were not operational. So from that standpoint, you know, I think we're, we're seeing an increase in, in maintenance just because we have fewer machines and we're doing our best to keep them operational. But some of it's just routine maintenance on the things, it's not troubleshooting all the time. We have had some problems, but I think most of it is a jam coin, which can happen anywhere, or paper outage.
So as far as the machines that we bought as compared to what was on the market there, do we feel that we, we went to the right vendor on this, Steve? Or is that, is, is this something we're going to watch closely and if we're, we're going to be continually replacing them over the years, it'd be good to...
Right. You know, I, 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 one of the main reasons we chose the vendor we did is they had a service center over the hill where the other, the leading, other leading vendor is based in Canada and has no service reps in the area. From that standpoint, I think our current supplier has done an exemplary job helping us work through problems. So from that side, are there ones that maybe operate better or easier? That's kind of a personal position. I know people like some of the other ones better, but I think from a, helping the city with our short staff, keep these things running, our current vendor's doing a good job with that.
Thank you, Steve.
One quick question here. Steve, before you go away, I, I thought I heard you say this, but are all the Pack Cove pay stations hardwired now, upper and lower?
Yes.
Okay, so, but there's no data on that because that's all brand new?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the ones in the upper lot we originally bought were solar. We put them in, quickly realized that just due to the trees around there, they didn't get enough solar. When we ordered the lower ones, we ordered them for hardwiring.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Chief, I had a question for you. You know, when you were giving your presentation, I was gratified to hear that we are doing the active shooter training every year. But, and then when you brought up utilizing social media, it got me to think about that horrendous event that took place in Santa Barbara, Isla Vista. Does the utilization of social media at all include monitoring social media to try to get in front of, of threats or perceived threats before they actually happen? And if, and I know that's a complicated and difficult question, but if not, is there a way that the community can interact with you should they come across a similar scenario?
Yes, and we do have, the investigators will periodically monitor some sites, especially for gang activity. If we see activity that's occurring around the area or in our area, then we try and monitor that. We will pick up information along the way where we will follow through with it. We do get tip line information from people, you know, whether it's for drug activity or if it comes from other agencies. But we don't have anybody specifically assigned to that, but we do periodically monitor it based on the groups that have crossed our attention, so we're aware of those.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
So one last item that the council asked about was the possibility of getting cameras to look at some of the artwork up on 41st. And they cost about, we've looked into that, they cost about $10,000 apiece and do have a maintenance, a maintenance component of about 500 bucks a year. Of the, of the three art installations on 41st Avenue, one of them, we do think is pretty well covered with existing cameras that are up there, non-city cameras, partnerships we have with other, other entities. We have reached out to a couple other folks there on 41st who have offered us power and data and a location should we so desire, but they weren't going to buy us the camera. So if you'd like to consider, consider a camera, they do cost about $10,000 and do have a, a maintenance fee attached, but we have found some locations where we could put them if necessary.
Is the, is the maintenance fee usual and sort of like our other lights that we've, hand cameras that we have, we would just be extending one of those kind of contracts or is this a new, a new person?
I, I believe that the...
Maintenance fee was mainly a, a data fee for collecting all the data, storing it somewhere and then doing any maintenance on the camera. So it was, you know, the transmission of the data and the storing of the data was probably the bulk of it.
Okay, so that's, but we're doing that at other locations, so they would just be extending that contract?
I don't think the city has any monitoring.
It's private, private monitoring that we have access to.
Right.
And as much as I'd like to see my industry profit by this, I would highly recommend against it. You can try and cover every square inch of the city with cameras, you're never going to get what you want when you need it. And we've had more success helping the Santa Cruz Police Department retrieve private video footage of crimes than we have from any city cameras. So you'd be surprised what the private video cameras pick up and catch and save.
Right, but there aren't any private cameras probably around this area or are there?
You're, you're going to, you may not get the actual event at the divide, at the scene of the crime, but you can see entry and exit of the perpetrators from the scene.
And I will note that in two of our more recent high-profile crimes, major tips in the cases did come from accessing private cameras on 41st. So 41st actually is pretty well covered with cameras. And I don't mind that message getting out to folks that may have ill intent in their heart.
More and more every day.
Yeah, 41st is quite well covered with cameras and so we do have some coverage on one of these, but you know, we could, we could get more. Another thing to keep in mind is that if the city were to get into the camera business, which, you know, there's pros and cons and I think Councilmember Termini summarized them pretty well, there may be other locations that, that may make more sense as the first place to, to get into the business.
Well, yeah, I mean, there, and there's sort of two issues here. There's the public safety issue and then there's the protection of our $200,000 art investment. And that's what, that's what I'm interested in and, and I wouldn't expect the businesses to have to pay the cost of, of a camera, you know, when that's really, we're protecting our investment and so I'd like the council to consider that.
Right, we do have the artwork insured, I believe, right? So that it is covered as, as part of the city's insurance, overall insurance plan.
But when the, when the sculpture was stolen in the village, wasn't that covered also or not covered? Was it private, maybe it was privately covered?
Well, it just, it, it was privately covered, but also it also didn't meet our, our deductible. So our deductible was $10,000, the value was $10,000. I mean, we were just below. But again, it was a private one, a privately contracted one, it was temporary, so it wasn't necessarily on us, it was on them. But we, we ended up settling that, just so you know.
Do we have cameras along the esplanade from the restaurants?
We're going to tell our secrets tonight.
No, we do not.
We do not?
No.
That's it?
We use, again, there are private industries or the business partners out there that cover some of the esplanade, the front of their businesses to protect themselves from problems that might happen after hours or even during business hours. And so we utilize them quite frequently.
That's good, thank you very much.
We partner with them, we've had some good success with them.
How about, how about an esplanade park besides the surf cameras, or anything?
No.
No? So we have, we already have situations where high public use that we don't have coverage now.
We've been looking at specific locations that there would, where that would be a good fit, should the need arise, if that's something that a direction of the council would like us to pursue.
Okay. And then, and then, Mike, maybe you can update us on what's the situation with the lighting of those projects?
We have yet to find a light, a power source for the lights that won't cost an exorbitant amount because the only thing on the median is our streetlight power. And streetlight is charged by the year, or monthly, but by the year of a streetlight operating. And there's no way for PG&E to monitor just an uplight of, you know, five lights of 20 watts each, which is considerably less than a streetlight. So right now, rather than pay $3,000 a year to uplight the sculptures, we're waiting for other options.
Solar, solar options?
Solar doesn't work. Did I say it out loud? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Solar lights, solar standalone lights do not collect enough power to, if the sculptures were solar panels, maybe, but not little solar landscape lighting.
Thank you.
We're still, Steve and I are still studying it. We're studying it now, we're studying.
I stepped down rather quickly and I apologize, the city manager covered me on this slide, but in regards to the landscape challenges, when I evaluated where the sites are for the sculptures, I also looked at some of the trees because depending on where we would want to put cameras, we would have some challenges there as to really what we would see and how much we would be able to capture.
Quick question. This site, the, look at the picture, does this happen to be one of the sites that we do have coverage from?
I'm not telling.
Possibly, possibly. It could happen.
And even though, even though we have insurance coverage, I just hate to lose one of those. I mean, at least if we had a person on camera that we could, you know, go after, that, at least we'd feel better about that, that, you know, we had the, we have the possibility of catching some shadowy figure that's on camera.
That's exactly what you would see on the film, a shadowy figure with a hoodie running away. We have a lot of those. We have a lot of those.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Okay. So the la, the last item on follow-through questions that the council asked was about the TOT rates at other jurisdictions. And so I just went quickly and polled all the other jurisdictions in Monterey and Santa Cruz counties. I excluded the, the inland valley cities in Monterey County, as they were not really tourist destinations. And then I also grabbed the first city up the coast, Half Moon Bay, and the first city over the hill, Los Gatos. So there was not a lot of, I didn't do any comprehensive evaluation of what the appropriate cities to look at was. I, that's how I came to the cities that I'm listing here. So you can see predominantly the, the, the TOT rate of 10% is sort of the most cities are at, which is where Capitola is. Monterey County's at 10 and 1/2, Santa Cruz County's at 11, along with the city of Santa Cruz. And then Half Moon Bay, Marina and Seaside are all at 12.
The city of Santa Cruz is at 11, too?
Yes. The city of Santa Cruz and the county of Santa Cruz are both, both at 11.
So, so we're surrounded with area, by areas that are all 11? We're the only one that are still at 10?
Well, Scotts Valley and Watsonville are both at 10. But yes, we are, since we're surrounded by the county, and the county is at 11. You'll recall that the TOT, I believe in this year's budget, we're projecting at $1.2 million. So each percent of TOT is worth about $120,000.
Okay.
So lastly, what I'm going to bring, bring back is, at the last meeting, council members mentioned, those were the questions that we heard, which required research to bring back to you. And then this were, these were all ideas that the council mentioned as potentially areas to increase funding in next year's budget. The community groups was one area where there was a discussion about some potential for increased funding. And once we get through this, we will hear from the community group subcommittee about what, what the recommendation is. Councilmember Harland mentioned trying to increase the funding for ADA repairs and ADA funding. There's currently $15,000 in the budget as a line item for ADA repairs. In addition, you'll recall that the CIP project, the wristband, 200,000 of that was for repairs related to fixing up the ADA ramps there. Councilmember Norton mentioned increasing funding for the WRF maintenance beyond, or at least, you know, we're currently capable within the WRF fund. We have the facilities fund, but obviously more funding would be better because the WRF is going to be a long-term issue. Councilmember Norton also mentioned the parking fund as a possibility to try and find more money to put into that. Councilmember Harland mentioned trying to do a library birthday. I think if a library birthday was done at a low-key level, it could be squeezed out of the existing budget. If we were thinking of something more elaborate, obviously, then that could be a different sort of thing. Cameras on 41st, you heard, an estimate of $10,000 apiece. Public Works Directors indicated that maintaining and working on that prospect pedestrian path at about a $3,000 a year sort of annual job to, to, to work and maintain that. And then Councilmember Harland mentioned a $10,000 increase in the museum funding to do some of the things that the museum used to do in the past. I understand there was a previous project to do some audio chronicles. And there's a question about potentially doing that in the future. So then taking a look at the budget, as I mentioned before, the budget is balanced. And so if we would increase funding for any of those items, there would need to be a corresponding reduction in expenditures elsewhere or an increase in revenue. And what, what we've done here, these are certainly not, I don't want these to be construed as recommendations from staff as places to cut out of the budget. The first three items, I think, I hesitate to say recommendations, but I think the first three could, could be done pretty easily. You'll recall that we have about $100,000 a year that goes into the parking fund. Initially, the vision was to use that $100,000 a year to help pay the Pat Cove debt, because that's a new parking lot. And through a series of steps, it was only budgeted at $80,000, $84,000, $85,000 a year in debt service out of the parking fund. So by modifying, changing that to taking the full parking fund to use for debt service, since we're paying more than that in debt service, that would generate about $15,000 that could be spent elsewhere. You'll also recall that we mentioned potentially using some of the PEG funding, which is the funding the city receives as a franchise fee from our cable providers here in town to provide access for the public to these meetings. As part of our community room remodel, there's a number of improvements that we will be proposing, which will be eligible for PEG funding. Some of the technology upgrades, we would be proposing there. So we think that we could reduce the community room project by $20,000 out of the facilities fund and increase the expenditure out of the PEG fund, which would, at the end of the day, result in one-time source of about $20,000 in the general fund. And then lastly, we've looked at the balance in the work comp fund, and we've had lower work comp due to a lot of good hard work by our managers and our staff, lower work comp rates than we've been anticipating. And so there is potentially a source of funding there, although I will also say that at times probably work comp will go back up, and we may wish we had the balance. The remaining items, and the remaining items are listed out as potential items if the council was looking for further expenditure reductions or revenue sources. Obviously, anything in this budget is, is subject to the council's discretion. And I don't want to be perceived as suggesting that any of these are, are a good idea. I'd be happy to talk about any of them and the merits or, of the project, but they were just listed out as things that potentially could be done if the council was looking for more funding. So with, are any questions on these?
Question about the Stockton Bridge assessment. I don't see us doing anything to the Stockton Bridge anytime in the near future. I don't see any massive amounts of water rolling down that creek in the near future, or trees, or stumps. To spend $45,000 at this time to assess a bridge that we know is old and needs replacement seems like a waste of money. Everything else seems pretty, I, I don't, I can't see anything on there that I would be willing to speak on eliminating, except for that.
I think, I can let the public works director, if my answer isn't, if he thinks my answer is inadequate. But I think the purpose behind this Stockton Bridge assessment is not to assess the condition of the bridge, but to assess what do we do, because we do know it's inadequate. What do we do next?
What, what, you mean, if we lose the bridge?
If we lose the bridge, or we were to come into...
I know what we'd do if we lose the bridge. We'd cut half the traffic in the village, but other than that...
We put a swinging bridge there that people have to walk across.
Up at a ferry.
This was, I put in CIP a couple of years ago. It's strictly a risk assessment of the bridge. This was identified as the number one risk in our local hazard mitigation plan that we completed. Risk to the village if, if there's a flooding event mainly.
So we know, we know what the risk is.
Yeah.
What's the $45,000 for?
To identify, is there a solution other than tearing down the bridge is really what I'm looking for?
If we all tell you that there is no other solution, we, can we save that $45,000?
Yes.
I don't hate to be flip about this, but seriously, I, I'm, is there a real need?
There's going to be a need the day it floods. That's all I'll say. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you know, when, when John Phantom was here as interim public works director, you know, for a little while, that was, I mean, that jumped, jumped out at him when he took a look at the town and said, you know, you've got a problem there. We go, yeah, well, you know, may seem to me sometime, but not right, you know, not immediately. We don't, we don't see...
How long ago was that?
Quite a while.
Yeah.
You know, we, we haven't seen high waters since they improved the Soquel Bridge. Remember that everything used to be stopped at Soquel Bridge, and it was flood Soquel and spread it out. That bridge has been elevated, so that is no longer a dam up there. We haven't seen this, this one take it. And everybody remembers 82 with the log jam that was here. It was pretty scary. Pretty scary.
Well, just not this last Christmas, but the Christmas before, I think it was on the 24th, I want to say, we were seeing volumes down Soquel Creek, you know, kind of the 81, 82 level, and it just didn't coincide with a high tide or high surf. I mean, so, you know, if there needs to be a synergy, you know, the synergy of bad things happened. The high, really high flows, that's seven, eight thousand or plus CFS, you know, high tides over five feet and waves. But when you get two of the three, you know, we get, we'll get flooding, and if we get three of the three, it'll be bad. So, you know, this, this our public works directors recommending is the first step, but it's going to be, it's a big project. I mean, it's, there's no easy answers to this. And there's probably a reason it hasn't been dealt with in 50 years.
If I remember correctly, Steve, didn't we, we did a study at one time, because we saw diagrams of what it took to raise that bridge to the level that it would clear, and it was just, the, the ramp on each side was ridiculous. It would, you'd have to re-alter the whole intersection of Stockton Avenue.
Yeah, the Stockton, getting back into the esplanade becomes rather difficult. So, I mean, one thing I'm interested in looking at is if possible to add wing walls so we don't have these abutments. I'm looking at the picture of the bridge. The abutment is sticking out in the middle of the stream. If we put wing walls there, so they're no longer in the middle of the stream or not. And is that, does that work? Does, I mean, and, and, you know, you kind of have to do some hydraulic, hydrological modeling and talk to the structural engineers about stuff like that and see if it works. And that's kind of where I saw this money going. I, I agree. I don't know if it's going to come up with an answer besides tearing out the bridge, which would be very difficult to put in a conforming bridge there, so.
How expensive are draw bridges?
I could find out. I mean, I, I would say that, you know, if we do decide to replace the bridge, there's probably federal funding that would pay for 95% of the, of our costs for that.
It's historic, too, you know.
Yeah.
Is it listed, it's listed?
On the inventory.
On the...
Probably listed somewhere.
It has a plaque on it. That's all I can...
There's a plaque. If there's a plaque, you know.
So this was, I saw this as there are other options between replacing it.
We could build bigger begonia floats.
So I've been here 12. John Phantom brought them up 13 years ago. We, we kind of started looking at it right when he left, tabled it then.
Well, Steve, if you, if you threw this assessment, determined that you could add wing walls, is that what you called it?
Mm-hmm.
How much would that cost, and when would we be able to do that?
I, I couldn't give you a number right now. I really, you know, how you would attach that into the creek bottom and all that. I, I don't have an answer to that. I would, that would be identified as, as part of that report.
Okay. But the big-ticket item and would...
Yeah, it would be a big, but there'd probably be, you know, for protecting a structure, we'd probably be eligible for funding.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
I'll just go over, the community group subcommittee met. As you recall, the last meeting, they were sent back that, to come up with some recommendations, to come back to the council tonight with some recommendations about the funding of the community groups. And so we met, and here's, here's the subgroups' recommendations. The two-year contracts, which, that is something, and again, you outlined in your budget principle. Cost of living adjustment, a COLA in year one of 2.6. A COLA in year two, based on whatever the CPI might be. And that COLA in year one equates to about $6,500. Increased funding for the Central Coast Center for Independent Living by $5,000. And the reasoning was previously they were at about $14,000, and then we cut them by $10,000 the pre, last year. And so they're asking for some funding restoration. Add one new community group from the group, the three that applied, and that new one is Companion for Life, and they requested 5,000, and the, the subcommittee is recommending the full 5,000. And then the committee also said, let's form a subcommittee in the near future to analyze future funding formulas, options and possibilities, and to come back with a recommendation at some, at some future time. So this is the community, the subcommittee's recommendation for this next funding cycle for your consideration. I think that's what we're going to move into next. Is it all of the funding recommendations, or are we just, are we moving into, yes, I think it's the next one. So if there's any, the discussion here, of course, the two subcommittee members was Mayor Story and Councilmember Termini. I think for the others, if they'd like to clarification on any of the recommendations on that particular item.
So at this point, what we're looking for is direction from the council regarding the community groups, the COLAs, the increased funding for one group, the addition of a group. The other bottom, budget modifications, and we can go back to that slide that the council mentioned at the last meeting, of what funding sources you'd like to consider for them. And then lastly, I'll remind the council that there was a recommendation regarding how the prior year's budget surplus would be allocated between reserves, facility funds, CIP. And there was a slightly different recommendation from the Finance Advisory Committee in which way the council would like to see, and we do, we can go into that detail, what the differences were, how the council would like us to draft the ultimate budget to reflect how that fund balance is allocated.
Thank you for that, for your staff report. Are there questions from council on the report? None? Okay. I think at this time, I'm going to open it up for members of the public to address the council on this agenda item. If you would like to, please step up. Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone up front, and we'll bring it back to council for discussion and potential action, giving staff direction.
Could I just ask the subcommittee what their recommendation was based on for the new group, rather than, there were three groups that asked us for more, although, although one group asked for funding for three different groups. So there's really five requests. But was there anything in particular that, that, that this application stood out for you, or that you thought was, you know, especially beneficial to our residents?
Sure.
For, for, I believe that we felt that it was, it was clearly a benefit to a group of people that were in need of these kind of devices. It was literally life-saving and immediate, and the cost was relatively low, considering how many people we could help for such a small amount of money. The increase for the independent living was due to, number one, increased clients that they've had over last year, and that was the reason why we cut them by two-thirds, and also their ability to help us, to help counsel us in some of our needs for ADA assessment of the city. I believe that pretty much sums it up, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it, it does, Mike. And I, in my thinking about companions for life and the Lifeline project, I mean, it's, it is a device to help low-income seniors who may fall in their homes. I know many seniors who have means are able to use these devices, you know, according to the CDC, falling is one of the major causes of serious injury or death among seniors. And to us, it seemed like a modest amount that would have the greatest tremendous benefit for capitalist, Capitola seniors who would not otherwise be able to afford these kinds of devices. This funding is meant to cover the service fees or cost of, of that monitoring system. It would also come into play and maybe assist our first responders, because they could be on the scene through this device sooner. So I think that that's, we were looking at, well, how did, how did, which one of these best help, I think Capitola meet its commitments and needs for safety in the community. And my also, my other thinking about CISO was, because we've been talking a lot about ADA lately, I know Stephanie, you wanted to look at really our ADA projects. And I just thought that we needed to maybe bring in and support the Independent Living Center, because they do work directly with the disability community and could, not necessarily identify, because I think we can do that, but they can help us prioritize where are the most critical areas of ADA deficiency that maybe we need to look at and, and try to make some improvements to. Those were the, the reasons why we focused on those two programs.
Because the previous year, we had decreased their funding because it decreased in, number of clients.
Yeah, understood. And, and we also talked about that, and it appeared that their number of clients had gone up, increased. And, but, you know, my sense is also the work that they're doing with the disability community is not only for local residents, but as a tourist community, people with disabilities who come in, they could potentially be a resource for people from outside the community who want to be able to access Capitola. So, yeah, those, those were the reasons why we selected those two.
Does 100% of the Companion for Life 5,000 go for the actual mechanism and monitoring? I don't want to set something up that it's a new bureaucracy or a new, a, a new organization that has to do this.
It's the monthly monitoring fee for that many devices?
It's the monthly monitoring fee.
Yeah. I think they get the devices themselves through a different funding source, but that, that makes them active and monitored, live monitoring.
Is, is there any other source for these out there? Is Medicare or Medi-Cal cover this type of?
It may cover the device. It doesn't cover the device either. So evidently, they're, they're scrambling around...
So this would be the only source for them?
They're scrambling around to get the money for the devices, and we're, we're covering their low-income people. And many people of means use these. They're very, very popular devices.
Okay. So, so the recommendation that I hear is, is increasing the budget by 10,000? Is that correct?
Well, well, if you look at the, the COLA also...
Yeah.
Because that wasn't built into the original budget, the total increase would be about 15,000 in this next year. And I think that we were proposing to look at, looking at that 15,200, which is from the parking fund. Well, it's not directly from the parking fund, but... parking lot, but then freeing up that additional money that would then go to community programs.
We could also just use the, the savings by the use of the PEG funding on the community room improvements, and it would fund this whole thing. It was around twenty thousand, was it not?
Right. The challenge with the PEG funding is, is I don't know that we're going to have eligible PEG funding projects in future years to offset. I think it's really a one-time revenue source.
It's, it's, it's ongoing for capital, correct?
The PEG funding is, but the use of the funds is just restricted to, you know, broadcast equipment for this room, for the televisions, for the microphones we're using. And I don't know whether we're really going to have those kinds of projects in every year's budget. So, we see next year's budget that we can offset some general fund expenditures with the PEG funds. I'm not sure whether we're going to have that in future budgets or not.
Well, just whenever we have something like the community room, which would be an expansion room for the council meetings.
Right.
And we could get twenty thousand, but ongoing. We may not know where, you're saying is, we don't know where we're going to get that sixteen thousand next year.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying. And so, the, if we do use the parking fund for the debt service for the parking lot, that really, as we were originally envisioning, that does generate, as the mayor indicated, fifteen thousand-two-hundred dollars a year, and that is ongoing.
And also, with this, with the program we've outlined from the subcommittee, it's fifteen thousand or sixteen thousand this year, and it's another seven thousand next year because we have a COLA coming behind it for the second year of funding, correct?
Right. Yeah, it does, and it does compound.
Do you have the comments?
Just a couple items. As we were creating this, this list of things to ask for, there's just a couple items that didn't come up at our last meeting that I haven't heard brought up, and I, we've talked about over the past, and I don't see any attention being paid to those, so I just want to bring them up. We had quite an investment in new sidewalks in the Espaumeade, and I don't see anything in our budget for increased cleaning of those sidewalks, or any money being allocated for that. Also, I know you, I guess we recently added some additional beach cleaning, and I don't know how that's being budgeted. Is that being absorbed? Is that something we also need to plan for? I know that when we don't do that kind of work, we get a lot of flack for it. So, I think it's a good investment of our money. I'm not sure what the, what, how, how Public Works is doing that.
So, regarding the sidewalk cleaning, we're actually working, I'm meeting with the BIA to try and develop a more comprehensive cleaning schedule that would, we can implement in the one that we've used in the past. We do have Public Works crews. We bought them a, a pressure washer, and they can last budget, and so they'll be increasing some spot cleaning around the area. But we are trying to develop a more comprehensive village-wide sidewalk cleaning than, than what we've had in the past.
Currently, how often are we cleaning the streets and paying for it from the city?
We clean it four times a year, or during the season, four times a summer.
Okay.
And, and what we're realizing, and what the, some of the business point out, some of the areas, that's fine. Some of the areas need less, some need more. So, we're trying to refine that a little bit so we can have a more, you know, a better approach than we have just coming in four times a year to do it.
And the cost of those cleanings, per cleaning?
About three thousand dollars. And regarding the additional, I assume you're referring to the additional janitorial services that we're doing.
Up in the cans and, and the bathrooms, yeah.
Yeah. We're able to absorb that in, in the existing Public Works, and we paid out of our contract services for janitorial services. Increase is incremental in, in the budget. So, we're, we are able to handle that without making a noticeable change to our contract service costs.
Okay.
One other important point in the budget is, we do have programmed in another maintenance worker position to try to get us back to full fun, full, full complement of staff. And I think that that's one of the things we've really noticed in the last couple of years, is just the increase in visitation and the demands that it puts on city services, the sidewalks, the trash, the bathrooms, the beach. So, that is the, getting one more maintenance person, we think. In addition, given that we have a large new public parking lot that we're going to need to take care of, as well as hopefully a public park coming online, an important element of this overall maintenance protocol.
And we're going to have to do more also with the stumwater runoff requirements and so forth, to probably clean the streets more often, clean the parking lot more often, and keep the streets.
Just one more final comment. And the other item, I brought this up in the past year, and it was about a, there's a path on Depot Hill that's under disrepair that I think I've had Public Works up there. I pointed out to you, I think it's at the end of, between Hollister and Oakland. And I think at that time, the estimate was about four thousand dollars to, to repair that. And I think it did meet the criteria for repair. I'd like to see somehow if that could be worked in there also.
So, yeah, it's, I mean, from a tripping hazard standpoint, I personally don't think it's that great, but the, the Grand Avenue pathway, as it goes from the last two streets, I can't remember the, how they order they go in. Anyway, there, it could do some patching in order to get in there. We need to bring a grinder in and do some patching in there. And I think we got a couple quotes, and it was about four to five thousand dollars to do it.
That was my recollection.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we got on there this potential prospect pass, so I just want to throw that out there also. If we're going to make some concessions and try to repair some things, especially anything that's a potential ADA hazard.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, since we're talking about repairs on Depot Hill, I'd also, Steve, you know, the, the fence on Cliff?
Yeah.
And we've been, we have repaired part of it, but there's the other part that it's like leaning at a twenty-two degree angle. I mean, it looks like the thing's almost, if it weren't for the bushes on the other side, I think it would have fallen. I'm concerned if somebody leans against it, it may very well...
Is this on Cliff Avenue?
It's on, yeah, it's the one on Cliff, just as you go around Fairview there, yeah, it's...
We routinely go through and rebuild so many feet of that fence.
I know.
I'll make sure we identify that.
I've seen some new parts go up, but, you know, that particular section there, it's about thirty feet, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, check that out because it looks like it could come over pretty soon.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Dennis.
I'd like to go back to community groups so we can get some conclusion, but I want to bring up one thing about, about the sidewalk cleaning. When we, when we helped the city help form the BIA, one of the things that the BIA was going to take on was, was, was taking up the sidewalk cleaning. They have a budget, they should be contributing this. They, they're a major beneficiary of this, and certainly, we have our tourists that come into town. There's a big problem there. But I, I think there should be contribution from the BIA in taking care of the sidewalks. And there are a few people down there that do, but, but there's a good percentage that don't. And we, we all know where the problems are, and they really need to be controlled by the people who have those businesses. It's not the city's responsibility to take care of messes created by those businesses. And so, I'd like that discussion, if we're going to, if we're going to increase that budget or put more manpower into it, I, I think we should, we should actually have discussion with BIA contributing into that. If it's not the BIA, certainly, the restaurants are on that front there.
And verbally, I do want to indicate that we have, we've told BIA that we would, we'd match contributions that they make. So, we have, we've, we've told them that if they can come up with three thousand, the city will come up with three thousand increase because we've heard that direction in the past.
Okay, thank you. Going back, going back to the community groups issue, I, I, can we, can we deal with this one right now as a package and find out where we're at with this? Is it okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any problem with a Companion for Life addition of five, five thousand dollars. I, I was not in favor of adding a group, but I see that there's a need right here. I don't know that, I don't know that it needs to be an ongoing thing. I don't know that it, it should be five thousand every year, if that's, I think there should be some, definitely accounting what is needed there after the first year. I'm not in favor of a two-year program, and I'll tell you why. Is that this whole program, and I discussed this last time when we had the community group discussion, is, is in need of revamping or rethinking of how, not the amount of money we give out, but how we give it out and how we make it. And, and, and we can't do that with a two-year program. We need, we need to actually set forward the next six months at the direction of, of this council with staff and the community group representatives, and, and determine a program that can, that could possibly be a line, a, a line item in our budget, but also has some structure that it has fairness to everyone that's, that's in it, including a possibility of long-term. But you can't do that. If you do a two-year program now, you, you put yourself out two, two years of the same program. So, I, I won't, I won't go along with a two-year program with this. The rest of it, as far as increasing the CPI, I'm a little concerned about the second year, if we're not doing the second year, because I don't think that there should be any increase any more than we pay our employees also. That increase should be the same. I think, what is the increase for, for city employees?
Two-point-three, I think.
Two-point-one.
Two-point-one, okay.
Two-point-two.
Two-point-two?
Two-point-two, I apologize.
Okay. So, as far as the CIP and the increase, the two, the two five-thousand-dollar increases, I'll go along with, but I will not favor doing a two-year program at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
If I could ask, how about Dennis, the, the COLA for this year? Yes? For a one-year program?
Well, we're giving, we're putting ten thousand in there now.
I just want to ask about, because you said you would be in favor of a single-year program and the two new groups. What about the COLA for this year?
I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
Equal to the city's.
Equal to the city's.
Equal to the city.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll talk on it. We're just going to talk on that issue right now. I, I originally was, was going to support the two-year program, but Dennis brings up a good point. You know, we, we are talking about establishing a committee to come up with a program, and it doesn't do us much good to have that committee if it's already locked in for a period of time. I think last meeting, I said that we, giving what we gave last year was a good commitment. Giving zero increase is what we gave our employees, and I'm committed to that amount. And the COLA, whether it be two-point-six or two-point-two, it does make more sense to be consistent with our own employees to, for two-point-two. So, I would, I would support that idea to the existing, what, what the committee proposed. And we changed to just the one, you're just going with the one increase, not the, not the other, the other?
We're not going to, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that next year when we have a new hearing.
Okay. I, I would, I would go along with that.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll support the subcommittee's recommendation. I'm sure you had a lot of discussion on it, but I think that this gives everybody a little bit of breathing room, which everybody really needs right now to kind of regroup and see where the economy's going and see where the programs are going. And of course, we know the needs are going up and up and up. But I think that we should give them a cost of living, the groups that we contract for services, a cost of living this year and a cost of living for a second year, a subcommittee can meet, can discuss future funding options, and come back for something that could be implemented in year three. So, I don't have a problem with two-year at all, and I think the other recommendations are good. And I'd be personally interested in serving on a subcommittee to look at ADA issues, and would invite another council member to join me. And we will ask someone from CECL to join us and come up with some recommendations for the next coming years.
Obviously, I'd be in favor of the two-year. And I'm feeling good about the two new groups. If, and, you know, a two-year could be a win for us, not to have to deal with it and not to have to accept any future, any new groups next year, not to look for any increases beyond the COLA. It could actually be a savings for us to, and some stability for two years. And I don't have, you know, the glass half-full outlook that a subcommittee is going to find a new way to disappoint community groups, because that's basically what we're talking about. You know, we're talking about potential cuts, maybe some raises in other areas, but it's never going to go well. I'd like to see it. I'd like to see some more structure to it. We could still do it, but I think that it would do us well to, to do the, the two COLAs consistent with the employees' COLAs for two years and add the two new community groups. That's just my feelings.
All right. Thank you, Mike. And, and I'm, I don't believe that necessarily a two-year contract would eliminate the possibility of having a subcommittee meet and study this. And if they came to seeing the need to have, you know, a fundamental, you know, redistribution or a different process, the contracts could be terminated in the second year. They're all going to be subject, they will have a termination clause, and we could, you know, move forward on that. However, I mean, I, I think, I've seen other jurisdictions attempt to do that, attempt to restructure their community programs and their allocations and their systems. And it is not an easy task, and, and I'm not quite sure that we, it, it could be accomplished here. And so, if you didn't have that, I think that, you know, the city would be, and the community groups would be better off, you know, knowing that, you know, they had some fallback mechanism, they had some steady state of funding for a, a long period of time, longer than just annually. And, and so, I mean, I, I think for that reason, I, I don't necessarily see it being inconsistent. I think that, I mean, we can have the subcommittee study it, Dennis. And if they do come to agreement, and it comes back to the council, and it should pass, that there'll be fundamental changes, they could be implemented. And so, and they could be implemented at the start of the second year. But if for some reason, the subcommittee is, is not successful and isn't able to come to, I mean, and it could take longer than certainly two years to try to make fundamental changes like that. So, I, I don't think that one is necessarily inconsistent with the other. I think that we can do both. And, and even, and if we don't, aren't able to make fundamental changes, I think we have, we have this kind of steady state funding contracts to be able to rely upon. And I think I kind of agree with Mike. It would save the city the, you know, really of having to deal with it and having to go through that process. And so, so obviously, I, I'm going to support the subcommittee's recommendation on it. And so, yes, Stephanie?
Well, just, you know, I, I remember when we used to get paper copies of all the community groups. We would have two boxes, we would have two boxes, all of us here, of applications, and we would go through those. And so, when you talk about time, Mike, you know, and the, that the community groups spend to put their contract together, and that we spend to read it, and that we used to spend time copying it. But, I mean, now when you look at the amount of work they, they put into it, that we put, our staff puts into it, just getting that ready, that we put into it, reading it and analyzing it and so forth. You know, I'm, I'm not set on a firm formula for the future, that it will be two percent or three percent or four percent of this or that or something. But to talk about that would be huge, and to at least get some direction towards that going would be wonderful. Not to say that we won't have a year when we could say, "We can't give three percent, we're going to give two percent of, of whatever, you know, it is." But at least it's, it's something that's there. And so, I think the two-year contract would be, would be a great start. And, you know, if we can build in something else, you know, into the, into the, into the budget for our commitment, it's kind of like our commitment to streets, you know? We used to have half a million, four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, you know, one hundred thousand. You know, it just would vary, going back and forth to our budget and our needs and our priorities. But, I mean, it's there. You know, it's not like we put it in there, you know? So, I think the, the contracted groups for services that we, we engage should just be a, a part of the, part of the budget, that, you know, you just, it's not questioned. Maybe it's questioned exactly how much, or maybe what new groups or what changes, you know? But it just should, you know, that, that just should be something we should just get over, I think. You know, two thousand and fourteen, we're doing it for thirty years. You know, let's get married. Or, or, yeah, or whatever you want to call it, but, you know, let's, let's make...
I'm wavering over here. Take it easy.
I know, I know. But, you know, I, you know, I, I have real commitment problems personally, but, but, you know, I can make this one in a heartbeat. It's, it's such, you know, there's, there's such wonderful services that are so valuable to our people that it, you know, it just should be here. It's, it's just, it's, you know, it just seems real clear to me that this is not something, and not just because I'm a nurse, because I used to be a school teacher, but, but, you know, the, the services that are provided that make people's lives so much better. You know, if, if you haven't seen it, you know, you need to see it because it's a, it's a, it's a real life changer. So, I just, I just think that, you know, it's part of our duty of, you know, we don't hear this too much. "I'm a property, I pay property taxes. My, I'm a, you know, I pay these, you know, so much in property taxes. I want you to do this for me." Well, you know, those people that are receiving our services pay property taxes and sales tax too, and, you know? So, I just think that, you know, this, the, the public safety and the public works and the, the human services, you know, and clean streets and clean beach and all the things that we have that make our town nice, you know, that, those services for people are just integral part of it. It's just, it's not a question that should be debated or talked about or, you know, questioned anymore. I don't... anymore, I don't think. It's, you know, we're way beyond that. And I just hope we can, that the, the future councils will not spend a lot of time with those kind of discussions in the future, the services. You know, you, you pay for them. And so, I hope that the council will, will remember that, and, you know, it's just not, it's not a discretionary, it's part of our doing business.
Dennis, you want to follow that?
You know, I, I follow, I follow your statement, Stephanie, and I, I believe that someday it should be a lineup. What a one-year program does is it puts us in a position to do something about it. You go to a two-year program, it's one of those things forgotten. I guarantee you, nothing will come out of this in a year. It just, it won't, it'll fall. The other thing is, is that, remember, we'll have a different council. You know, we're, we're making a decision for a future council, and it's, it won't be the same council up here next year. And so, we're, we're making a judgment ahead of time without including all the people that are, that will be involved during that, during that budget session. We don't do that with any other budget item. We don't, we don't make a two-year budget on any other part of this, this, this budget here that I know of, even, even the cap improvements. So, I just feel the one-year program is good, and I think it's fairness to a future council if they have the right to vote and make a decision on this thing. And so, I think, I'm supportive of every, all of these items, I just think a one-year budget is, is sufficient, and it forces this city, in particular this council, to make a, a decision in making, making this a better program than it is. That's my statement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
Just a quick follow-up. Dennis, I agree with your point, and, you know, I, I think we all value the importance that community groups do for us. With that being said, you know, our finance director started off this meeting by letting us know, hey, we don't have as much money as we thought. And I remember last week, Councilman Termini brought up a point about personnel, and the question was about creeping, and, you know, our, our employees creeping. And my concern with this number is, we were at two hundred and fifty-four thousand last year, which is a significant number. It's the most generous of any city in this county giving to community groups. Capitola is by far the leader in that. And, you know, I, the reason I look forward a bit to the committee that's going to work on a program is because I'd like to have that number tied to something that, that is a version of how profitable we are. I mean, if we're successful as a city, then we can be in a position to share. But, but we don't have that formula. We just come up with this each year, we, we add numbers. What was two fifty-four last year will now be two sixty-eight this year. Potentially, it could be two seventy-eight next year with a, with a COLA in it. And every time we put money into one program, we just went through this little demonstration how we have to take it out of someplace else. And, you know, when, with, if our revenues are high, and we do, like Dennis said, we do work on a committee, and we come up with some formula that really is a good measure of how we do things, I think that's how we have the win-win for everybody. So, for that reason, like I said, I, I, I like the idea of allowing that committee to do its job the one year. And I think we've been very generous by going from two fifty-four to sixty-eight in this first year. So, I think that sends a good message. That's my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. I would just like to point out, I mean, on that question of creep, that in oh seven, oh eight, the budget for community programs was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In oh eight, oh nine, it was two hundred and seventy-five dollars. In oh nine, oh ten, it was two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Thousand?
A thousand dollars, yes. Thank you. And in eleven, twelve, it was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And, but in twelve, thirteen, it went down to two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And just now, in thirteen, fourteen, it went up to two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So, if there's creep going on, it's creeping a downward way. We're just trying to, I mean, I think that, what my objective is trying to provide some incremental increases, but with acknowledgements about, you know, what are the things that our community needs, and making tangible connections between the funding and the services that we're purchasing from these purveyors. And so, you know, I don't, I don't think that we're running the risk of having budget creeps with community programs. And one thing, I think that this is, these are all discussions and topics are what would really be good for the subcommittee to study and to really get into how our, the city may want to make changes to its, our making the community programs a line item and any other changes that it may desire at that time. You know, I think working with the Human Care Alliance. So, with that, I think maybe what I'll ask if, yes, Mike?
I'd like to make a motion. But I'd like to also bring up a point where the subcommittee can be very, very important with the two-year program in that if the subcommittee should determine that some of these programs, because of the number of people they serve, because of their geographic location and where they serve people, that they would be cut in the third year, it would give them a year's notice saying, you know, you have a two-year contract. In sixteen, seventeen, you will not be part of our community program, period.
Which group?
A group that the subcommittee may identify as, you know, either not getting, not getting as much or being cut from the program completely, because it could happen, it has happened before.
Sort of one-time funding or sort of-
What I'm saying is, this committee can be very significant and give any community groups that may be cut or eliminated a one-year notice saying, you, you do have fifteen, sixteen, but in sixteen, seventeen, you will not be part of our community grant program as part of the, the subcommittee and the, and the council's determination. So, basically, we would be doing the community group a service if we should cut or eliminate them in that third year by giving them that one-year buffer, and they should have that one-year buffer, as opposed to being told the night before we approve a budget that they don't have money. Because that's the way it's been, and that's been the really sticky part about doing this, is we get together, even the subcommittee, we line item some things, then the night, like tonight in previous years, we say, okay, in group XYZ, there's no funding for that. And they're in the audience, and they go, what? It's, I think, it could be shocking, running a nonprofit and hearing that. So, what I'm saying is, the, the point I'm making is the budget, the committee, the subcommittee is important in that it can identify all these things in the next nine months, and it can prepare that sixteen, seventeen community grant funding perhaps to the shock and dismay of some groups, but it could be something this council could determine and would give them a year to regroup because they know they're not getting that money in seventeen, sixteen, seventeen. Follow what I'm saying, Stephanie?
Well, yeah. I mean, maybe we should put them under contract services so that that, that clarifies it a little bit.
I don't know. What I'm saying is, I think that we need to be able to give the subcommittee the kind of flexibility so that saying no isn't a shocking no, it's, this is the way it's going to be a year and a half from now, be prepared, because this is what the council's going to determine.
Or what the council may determine, depending on who's on it.
Right. But I'd like to see the council be able to give them forewarning so that we have, there's a year in place. Would it help anyone who's, who's teetering on the, is the two-year the problem, or is it the compound COLAs? And perhaps the, because I'd love to see more unanimity in it, and perhaps, you know, either eliminating one of the COLAs or doing something to, to bring everybody along. I know the votes are up here for it, I'm just putting that out there.
I, Mike, I'm just, I just think that one year is what we need to do here.
Okay.
The COLAs don't bother me.
Then I will, I will make a motion to follow the, the subcommittee's recommendation to add the two groups with an addition of ten thousand dollars to give a two-point-two COLA this year and a two-point-two percent COLA next year.
Isn't it to be determined next year?
Yes. Right. Whatever it is for the employees.
Yeah.
To form a subcommittee for ongoing study of this that can give us, can report out before the end of this budget year. And also that no new community groups or additional fundings will, or applications will be accepted for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. That's part of my motion.
Can you talk about the new budget year, not this budget, not this budget year, which will end in a couple weeks?
Next year.
Right.
I'm talking about the next, if this is a two-year program, that's it for two years. In other words, next year, all we need from the community groups that we funded this year are their financial statements. No new groups will be considered next year, because this is two years. That's my motion.
Second.
One question of the motion. Does that include a two-year contract for companions for life?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a no?
That was a yes.
That was a yes?
Yeah, as it stands right now, just two years.
So, there's a motion and a second. I'm gonna-
Can we hear the motion back? Did you get all that?
Staff's understanding of the motion is basically to take the subcommittee's recommendation with an adjustment to this year's COLA to match the cost of living, to form a subcommittee group that's going to report out this next calendar year, and no new applications next year.
Correct.
And two-year contract.
Correct.
Okay. So, with that, though, and I'm going to ask, because I do, as I had mentioned previously, I have to ask that the particular action for the Community Action Board be separated. And so, I'm going to call for two separate questions. I'm not going to participate on the CAM question, and I already see where that may go.
And also, just to complicate things even more?
Yes.
I know it's a very small amount, but I need to cause a separate motion, the funding for Dientes, because my company is doing electrical work for Dientes right now, and I should not be involved in their funding.
To really complicate things, I, I need to withdraw from the boat on, on Save Our Shores.
Okay. Anybody else, can we all leave the room?
Put this together, Sam.
Let Stephanie just decide for us.
So, why don't we begin with a motion on all the rest of them, except for the three that have been mentioned here? Okay? So, we'll apply the motion and second to all the community groups. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed?
No.
The motion passes three to two.
So, who are the noes?
The noes were-
Shouldn't we do a roll call on that, Sam?
Yeah. You want to do a roll call?
Okay.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
No.
Councilmember Botor?
No.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye.
Okay. Now, let's do the motion and for Dientes with Mike recusing himself.
So, move?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Let's have a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Botor?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Abstain.
Oh, excuse me. Mayor Story?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously of those eligible to vote. Now, let's do the motion with Dennis recusing himself on Save Our Shores.
So, I'll move approval of funding for Save Our Shores.
Second.
And there's a second, there's a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Botor?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye. Now, let's do the same for the Community Action Board.
I'll move approval of funds for the Community Action Board.
Second.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
You're running this part of the meeting.
Okay. Motion's on the Community Action Board application?
Moved, I'm so moved.
And second.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Botor?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Anybody else?
I think that's it. I think we covered them all, and I really admire the way everyone handled this. I really appreciate it.
Sam, can I make one recommendation?
Certainly, yes.
Can we, can we deal with the issue Stephanie brought out about funding for ADA? Can we talk about that right now? Is that, since we're related to that?
I think, actually, I was going to go, because what the staff had asked were, there were four areas that you were asking for direction on, and one of them was other budget modifications, and I think this falls within that vein. So, let's start with that, Dennis.
Well, I, I think that, that it's something our community wants us to do, and it's well money, well-spent, and we do have a number of problems in the city that we admit to with ADA access, in that I would not be afraid to move on, from the bridge money over to ADA, move it up by ten thousand for ADA fund. I think right now we have fifteen?
We, yes, we have fifteen specifically in an ADA line item.
Okay. And move, move it up to twenty-five thousand for the ADA.
And on the same slide, if we could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose that we eliminate the cameras on Forty-first Avenue.
None of these are in the budget right now.
Oh, perfect. Then we don't have to eliminate anything.
You don't have to eliminate anything. They have questions.
Isn't the ADA, the ADA funding's in the budget, isn't it?
It is. I'm sorry, that's in the notes, in the notes. We have fifteen thousand currently in the budget, and there's two hundred thousand in the RISBEN project for ADA, but there was a comment at the last meeting that, that the council member wanted to see that number higher.
Okay. Well, I would like to see the Prospect pedestrian path and the museum funding put into the budget as well as the Grand Avenue path. And you know where I want that to come from.
That was going to be my next question.
Sorry, Steve.
So, you were suggesting the Prospect path, the-
Grand Avenue.
Grand Avenue.
And, and the museum funding. And we burned that bridge when we came to it. Sorry, that was too easy.
How much is remaining in, if, if at, what's that? It was fifty in there?
Oh, it was forty-five.
Forty-five. And you just took seventeen?
Ten, ten, twenty, twenty-three, thirty, we just took thirty thousand of the forty-five, not counting community groups.
Right. So, if you were to take, in terms of funding sources, staff identified about fifteen thousand dollars that we can use in the debt service, basically modifying how we're structuring some of the costs and the parking fund, that'll pay for the community group project. Is that-
Well, I thought the balance of the bridge would take care of the community group projects.
Well, the, the bridge is a one-time project, and the community groups are multiple years.
Right.
So, my, my recommendation would be in terms of a funding source for the community group increase, that we would need to look at the, using the parking fund for our debt service and the parking-
For ongoing.
Yes, yes. Now, in terms of the funding for the other projects that you mentioned, obviously, we can use the PEG funding for the community room, which frees up twenty thousand, which gets you, and I'll, I'll put these numbers up on the screen here in a second, which gets you twenty thousand dollars. And then, there's obviously the, the bridge project, which it sounds like there's some interest in discussing.
The what, Jamie? I'm sorry.
Looks like you have plenty of extra money there to do everything we just asked for.
If the bridge project is dying, then yes, there will be extra money.
Is there one thousand dollars to put towards fixing the fence up on Cliff Drive?
We'll get that done, we'll get that done.
I know better than to touch it.
If we all help.
But I don't want to discourage Steve from going after a drawbridge for us. I think that's a real-
We're going to get this up on the screen for you.
How much money is going into the RISBEN? Is there any additional, or just the fifteen that's all?
Two hundred.
Okay.
The RISBEN is two hundred plus another hundred thousand dollars.
We've already put that in there.
You want to put that in there, yes. And this is the Grand Ave-
I know, we do.
And this is the Grand Ave, Path.
Does, the, the 200,000, does that include the possibility of making the pathway going through the Rispin and, you know, on the curve there? Is that part of that program, Steve?
You didn't want the cameras, did you? Okay, tell them.
We're currently programmed to do 200,000 for the next three cyc, fiscal cycles to bring up the pathway all the way from Bay Ave, or Wharf Road down to Bay Avenue compliant. So right now, the first year is from the bridge down to the Nob Hill Center and that's the 200,000 for that ramp, unfortunately, it needs to be completely rebuilt. And then we'll have another 200,000 then following year, so total is 600,000.
Have we already refunded the engineering for the design of that? Are we working in that now or is that...
We have not.
We have not. Is that, so that's in, that's the 200,000?
That's part of that, yes.
Okay, okay. Would there be a consideration to basically not call Perry Park a park anymore? I don't know that it's a park. I mean, we've taken, we've taken the tables out of it, we've, we've completely altered the landscape there with, with the ADA paths and what we do there. So it's really no, it's no, not really a park anymore.
It's Perry Path.
Perry Path. So, I don't know, I mean, I, do we really do any maintenance there or is there a thing that we do out there that, that makes it a park that's, gives it that definition?
As far as I know, the only thing we do on a daily basis there is, currently we clean the Perry Park, there are the restrooms and empty trashcans.
And we're closing the restrooms, right?
That's part of our proposal, yeah, so.
One more question.
I mean, I don't know the history of it being called Perry Park, but I agree, it's certainly more of a pathway than a park.
Yeah, it, it's embarrassing to call it a park. I, I think that we've taken everything that resembles a park out of there. I have another question, where's Steve? What, what would be the cost to finish off the bathrooms in the lower, to do the bathrooms in the lower?
Right now, we're looking at estimates of about 175,000.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, just to follow up on that, we are looking at alternates and trying to come up with a lower estimate, which is bringing in modular restrooms, which are actually pretty nice, it's what they have at Anagen Cummings Park and, and things like that. So we're looking into that alternative.
Thank you very much.
Any other budget modifications?
They also make trailers that are bathrooms, you know, like a modular home. Would that be worth looking into because that would at least be permanent and, you know, a little bit nicer than the...
The modular ones are nicer than the trailers.
Are they?
Yeah, the modular ones are actually quite nice. I, I wouldn't want to bring in a, a mobile trailer, which is what you see at fairs or other, you know, temporary installations. I think we need something more permanent there.
Sam, I have one more I'm going to bring up.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I, I don't know where we move the money from or what, what the solution is here, but I do strongly feel that we need to start, give some thought to our wharf. I'll go back to this. And it isn't that it's neglected in its, its maintenance, we know that wharf's down, but it's just the fact that we, we're not planning anything for that wharf. We lose the wharf, we lose the identity of the community. And last time we were bailed out by the Coastal Conservancy. And it'd be nice if we started a funding program to look at outside funding or a partner on the wharf. We don't need to physically own the wharf, I mean, we could be partners with someone too. So the consideration of, of maybe, maybe we give some emphasis to the wharf committee to look at what, what, what the wharf really should be. I mean, are the uses we out, have out there the best uses for that wharf? Is there something in the future that, that may, maybe more public oriented or, or what we want to do with it? But I, I do think that we need to start planning for its future and it's, it's, I think if, if I'm not mistaken, it's the oldest wood wharf on, on the California coast now. And so there's certainly some historic designation to it, maybe there's some funding there?
Maybe Tedesco wants to buy it back.
But the, the wharf is included in the facilities fund that we're actually going to put money into, correct?
That is correct. And then along finding partners we are, I'm working with Carolyn Flynn to reach out to some resource agencies. We're actually sending out an email probably next week to them to try and encourage them to see if they are interested in partnering with us for trying to secure the long-term future of the wharf. So we are making efforts along those lines and we'll give your report back when we hear from them.
Let's dust off the last wharf report and give it to Ed to read because the rest of us, I think, have all read it, where we did hire the engineers to look at it, to see, well, would it be better to rebuild it, to tear it down, to let storms tear it out? What do, any of the, the various options that we had and what the very, cost at that time would be, but that would be real interesting for you to read it.
That would be great and in addition to that, I think maybe if we took the remaining 43,000 and put it into the facilities fund, that would serve us all.
Yeah, take the rest of the bridge money and put it in the facilities funds because technically the bridge is facilities, so.
And, and, and the facilities fund includes the wharf, so we, I'd be happy to look at that report.
37,000 that's left over in the bridge fund go into the facilities fund?
Okay. So then we have 37,000. Tell me if I'm getting this right. The, that's what it was, 37?
That's 37 and the eight, 45.
And so now we have this thing, whoops, too much. And it's not reduced, we are now cutting the bridge study. I tried, Steve.
We lost a bridge, but we saved the wharf. Just can't get to it.
You know, I, I think it'll, you know, it's on the list, it's just not real high on our list quite yet. You know, we need some more real wet winters and some really bad storms and some more slides and...
We can panic later.
Things like that to...
Sam? On this, on this ADA thing, I think that a good next step may be to talk about it as council about an ADA committee. And I know Stephanie had an interest in doing it, I have an interest in doing it. And so, we have some really good talent still in the area and Frank Phantom is a real expert on ADA, Cecil being involved, certainly the police chief. I mean, there, we have resources there that, that, that we could start movement, show movement this year. And we don't need to spend money yet, but we certainly need to identify, just identify what the problem is and where we...
Yep.
I don't know if Daniel Kostlak's still living in the area.
Yeah, he is, he's doing, working on Salinas right now.
Well, he, he may be an ideal, he would probably volunteer to do this with us, so...
I can check with him.
Yeah, I, Daniel's actually, I've talked to him several times on several issues, so I would recommend he be on it. I think our building, current building official should be on it, I think I should be on it and a couple of council members and then anybody else, I think would be a perfect start for it and we can see where we would go.
What's the, what's the rule about cracked sidewalks? Half inch?
Half inch.
Okay.
So we have, I mean, Stephanie and Dennis have volunteered to be on it, is there any interest from my other side here?
Sounds like enough council members to me.
Okay, that's good. All right, everybody's, so, well, thank you for volunteering and, and that is going to be an important committee, important work. And so, and I guess the other, I mean, we did form another subcommittee, the community programs and, you know, I, Mike, you want to be, I mean, our current committee? And I'm happy to do it too, but I did want to, I mean, acknowledge, I'm, I'm going to be termed out here in a few months, so...
You have to get it done before you go, so...
Well, that's, that would be the thing, I would, just so you, if you have me on it, I'm going to be pressing to try to get something done before, before I leave and so, okay, but...
I, I would like to throw my name in the hat for that committee.
You would?
I would.
You want to be my alternate?
That would be fine. I just have some input for a formula, so I think that's what we're trying to come up with.
You've just given them an out, you realize that, right?
An out or an in, it doesn't matter, I just want to, want to acknowledge that...
That's only the case we don't finish before, you know, I'm termed out then.
Hence the out.
And step in.
Is it possible for the treasurer to sit on that committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
She should.
I think the treasurer should be on every committee. Got all that time in your life, Christine.
So, so I think we have, maybe we could invite, you know, one member of the Human Care Alliance to join us in that, at their selection. And I, and I think we, we have a couple of working committees, this would be great. I want to get, any other budget modifications that council would like to see?
I just think, I should, I just want to give a little attention to Molly's letter. It, it wasn't just rambling, it was specific and it was good. And I think the speeding signs we already own and we've had purchased by grants are semi-portable. In other words, they're solar, they're bolted to the ground, but we can move them around the city year by year, so perhaps Monterey is a good spot for one of those to move to in the, in the coming months.
I actually responded to an email today from members of the community up in Monterey, the hill between Escalona and the village. Because I did meet with them, they expressed their concerns and I understood what they were trying to relay to me. One of the challenges is you have to dig a three-foot footing and so placement location is a difficult piece to that. But I think before that, what I'd like to do, or at least a plan that I'd like to do is have one of my volunteers do a speed survey up in that area to actually get a very good understanding of what the speeds are, so then we can look at the, what the viable solutions really are in regards to that. And so that's kind of my plan.
Great, because I don't think anyone really gets to 25, to that stop sign at the top of the hill, but...
And I did explain some of the challenges in regards to the stop sign that is down at the bottom of the hill when you are moving away from a stop sign, especially going uphill with the landscape design of the wall, I mean, the sound does travel.
Yeah.
But it is something that we will look at and I think by getting started, we should probably look to see what the speeds are really.
Okay, great, just wanted to mention that. And we do still give a 5,000 grant to the Begonia Festival, do we not?
We do.
I just couldn't find it in the budget. I did in fact find the Chamber of Commerce grant, so that's good. And that's all I have, I think we may have a budget.
I do want to note that the Chamber of Commerce grant is actually incorrect.
It should be 1,000 greater.
For, for some reason it's listed at 29,000.
It's 30.
Yeah, we will, we plan to increase that to, in the final budget, we'll get it to 30.
It was a misprint.
And Begonia Festival is there? Yeah.
Okay, yes.
I'm wondering on page 33 if we should do anything about this topic that we talked about in the beginning about the fiscal year 15, 16 and 16, 17 to add some money, move some money around a little bit so that the general fund surplus has a little more in it. And I know, I know it's just moving money around, you know, it can be over here or it can be over here, it can be over here, but, you know, that's pretty dramatic when you look at that. And I'm just wondering whether for us all to feel better and for the next council members to feel a little bit better, so they don't look at that and go, my God, look what they did, didn't they address that? And, and, you know, what's happening here and are they responsible and, you know, that kind of thing?
We just take that chart out, I never liked that chart.
This chart is showing good things. This chart is showing balanced budgets into the...
Yeah, but the, yeah, I know, but those little 15, 16, 16, 17 make it look like we don't have much. And I know it's right at, I know it's right at the baseline and that's what it's supposed to show, but...
Yeah, so those are showing projections for balanced budgets is what they're showing.
Right.
You know, I've gotten a couple of comments about this graph and I'll tell you, the finance, finance director and I really like it, but I'm sensing maybe that it may not be being received as well at the council, so we might need to rethink.
You can put it up by your, on your wall, on your, in your office and look at it every day.
It's not, we know, I understand what it's saying, just visually, it doesn't instantly look good, but I think that this is, I think this is a good inspiration for us to consider raising our TOT in 15, 16 to 11 percent and that would bring those bars right up.
Well, that would bring the bars right up. It's clearly, it's not conveying the information, because I received another question from a council member before the meeting about the recurring revenue chart that we used to put on, the one-time versus recurring revenue analysis. And I opened this up and I said, well, but look at this, this is showing it much more in depth, we're showing it for multiple years, we're pointing out where the problems are lying. It obviously isn't conveying that information very clearly, so we'll rethink it. I, I do know that there's some requirements for CSMFO to have some sort of multi-year projection in your budget, but it seems like we maybe could present it a little bit differently because, because this is showing basically good news.
I see that. After some study. It gets better the longer you look at it, but...
Well, anytime, anytime you have, you know, you have these tall graphs that are showing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and then you have something that's flat, you know, it, you know, you have to look at it first to see, you know, what, what is it really showing and...
Well, compared to 14, 15, flat's looking pretty good.
Yeah.
So that's, I think that was the point that was trying to be made, is we're coming out of some adversity and we're actually looking...
Well, actually, 14, 15 isn't even really showing adversity, what it's showing is that we're spending some of the surplus from 11, 12.
Yeah, yeah.
It just, it just requires a lot of explanation, so I'm not sure how valuable the chart is, but...
Let's see if everybody ripped that page out.
I'm getting it loud and clear, I mean, to me, I see...
That's what Mike wanted to do.
Yeah, I know. No, but there's a good graph in the back of that, that's the problem.
Maybe if it's cleared, everybody else.
I tried. Okay.
Okay, so is the, is the last thing, I think you got funding sources, direction? So the last thing was the allocation of prior year's general fund?
Yes.
Is there, you know, the finance committee had made a modified recommendation?
Did we not re-modify that two meetings ago, two budget meetings ago? Didn't we, didn't we motion to re-modify that from the finance committee?
No, a motion wasn't made.
Really? So this was staff's recommendation at that meeting and then the finance advisory committee was recommending moving 25,000 from the facilities fund into reserves.
It makes more sense now since we just increased the facilities funds by 37,000.
To take it down by 25?
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
I will so move.
But, you know, if the, I mean, I want to bring up Dennis's concern about the wharf. I mean, if that's, if the facilities fund is our, you know, response to the wharf issues fund, maybe we shouldn't, you know, diminish it at this time.